Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Welcome to the Wattsburg Gary School District. We are a student-centered future focus for a world-class education. The Board Work Session for June 14th is now called to order. I would like to announce that this board met in executive session on June 7th at 7:00 PM for the purpose of discussing the superintendent evaluation. The board also met in executive session on June 14th at 6:30 for the purpose of discussing the Act 44 Safety and Security Report. At this time, would you please rise in a pledge to the flag?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Here we have the roll call, please, Madam Secretary.
Mr. Blazer.
President.
Mrs. Farrell.
Here.
Mrs. Lee.
Here.
Mr. Mattson. Mr. Morbe.
Here.
Mr. Paris.
Here.
Mrs. Pound.
Here.
Mr. Pushcheck.
Here.
Dr. Pushcheck.
Here, thank you. The Chair recognizes Mr. Kimberlin for school report, Mr. Berlin.
We don't want to have any school reports next week.
Okay, thank you. Bring us to your guests and citizens' comments. We have two people that have signed up to address the board this evening. First is Danny Carter. Mr. Carter, welcome. You'll have five minutes.
Danny Carter, 370 Lobo Street, Wattsburg, PA, 16442. So I know why these guys are here. I'm kind of curious to myself to know what went on with the hot bus incident. I have the right to know. I'd like to see the videotape as well. I think the public should know what actually happened because that's a huge safety issue. Regardless of how it is, there should have been better, having this approach taken for that. Crack the windows, put those kids that are not doing what they're supposed to be doing behind, give them a three-day suspension off the bus and let their parents deal with it. So, I know there's way, way many more situations that should have been handled. How it was handled, I don't feel it was appropriate. I don't feel passing the dollar on to the bus garage to have them investigate themselves, I don't feel that's appropriate as well. I think you guys still need to look into it on this aspect of it, not sensibly subcontract them out. That's the way it should handle. That's not how things should work. Because, of course, things happen. Videotapes get lost, erased, blah, 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 blah. There's way too many things that could happen. You guys want to talk about the safety of the children? You guys were so happy. So far, the bus garage has been doing okay. I've heard of a few other incidents, but that is what it is. So, I think something else should be done and the public should be more notified on what actually was taking place. If she truly turned the heat on, I hope appropriate actions will be taken place, not just being fired, but criminal charges should be pressed against that because if anybody else left their kid in the hot car with their heat on, they're going to jail. They're going to jail. You're going to put those kids' safety at issue, their lives at risk for something? Something needs to be handled way better than what it is. Sorry, I'm out of breath, they're playing a game up there. So, second, I mean, I know it's work in progress. Hopefully, we can get some batting cages in there for the softball and baseball programs. It'd be nice to look into scoreboards for them each as well because, I mean, obviously the softball team did rather well this season. I feel something else should be done. You're building a great complex, let's finish it off, put a couple of scoreboards. We're like one of the few schools, high school-level teams that don't have a scoreboard for their outfield. There's Little League teams that have scoreboards for Little League games and they're not playing at the high school fields. They're playing on Little League complexes. So, I think something should be addressed in that issue on how, if we're going to, you did a great complex, let's support the rest of it. Let's show, I know it costs money, but let's look, at least start looking into it and see what we can do about that. Last thing is the handicap access to the baseball field for the home-field side. There is no handicap accessibility for the home-field side. You go up that big hill, right now, there's one player who's got a broken, fractured ankle and he's got to take his crutches and climb up the big hill. At least tonight, the main gate was open, so he was able to go through, but to go all the way this way and then come around, there should be something on the home-field side as well. I mean, I see you guys just had it resurfaced, so let's put it in the home-field, active access, handicap accessible for those people. There's a handful of actually handicap-accessible people that come to the ballgames that need that help and there's a few on the varsity team, grandparents, all that stuff. So, we should look into doing that as well. I mean, you got the access roads for the other side, but once that main gate is closed, you can't go, either you cross the field or you can't go to the home-field side. So, something should be addressed. If you come from the one sidewalk, you can bring it up to the other way. You're looking at maybe 80 to 100 feet. So, I think something should be addressed in that aspect as well. And, you know, I want to say it a million times, let's get some more kids involved in sports and I think the activity buses would do a tremendous amount to help on that. Like I said, you've got $4 million sitting up there. Let's get a JV baseball, softball team, well, softball's good, but let's get a JV baseball team, JV football team, ninth-grade teams again, like there used to be. So, I think that's going to help a lot. A lot of people don't like ride-sharing with kids anymore. When I grew up, you could do that. Now, parents don't want to take that risk or however you want to put it, they don't want to do that, which is fine, that's their prerogative. But at least if the option's out there, sign-up sheet, charge a little bit, whatever. So, and then, is that my time?
Mr. Carter.
Thank you, Mr. Carter. Yes, so, Mr. Carter, I just wanted to clarify some misinformation on your part. Regarding the bus incident, we have not washed our hands of responsibility of what happened on those buses. We own that, even though it's subcontracted. And we conducted a joint investigation. Our principals watched the video and we got the HR and regional manager from Durham and we did that together. Appropriate actions were taken. The bottom line is, the kids in the back of the bus had the windows down before the bus started even moving out of that elementary parking lot and they were violently shaking the bus back and forth. That's why the driver said, hey, put the windows on, because they wouldn't stop doing that. That's, that's what the video shows. And, you know, could it have been handled better? Yes, and that driver was addressed appropriately to the satisfaction of the district by Durham because it's their employee. But ultimately, you know, we're responsible for what happened, so we're not sure. Is that driver fired?
Hang on, sir, it's not your time.
So, that's what happened there and I don't want to, I don't want to minimize the event, but if it was raining, I mean, the roof vents were open, both, the driver's window was open, the fans were on, there was air circulating, that would be the exact same situation if it would have been raining and 85 degrees on that day. So, I agree that she handled it wrong. No, you're not talking. It's my time to talk, Danny. You had your time. So, we're satisfied with the action that Durham took. It was appropriate. I cannot discuss personnel questions. That's a question for Durham. Batting cages are in progress. Mr. Carter has quotes on scoreboards. He got those quite a long time ago and we have a plan that's been rolling to get the money together so that we can run electricity out to them. That is why, you'll see, there's alosets on the dugouts. That's why we put those there, because our long-term plan is to get the scoreboards. So...
Well, those were also for pitching machines for the coaches as well.
Well, the bottom line is, there's no electric up there, so it couldn't do anything.
I know, we've asked for years for that. We've asked for years.
Sir, please, your time is up.
And the field does have handicap access, Danny. I've told you this before. It might not be where you think it needs to go, but that facility is ADA compliant. We cannot build a ramp on that grade. That's against code. We'd never get it approved. It's too steep.
That's why you come from the backside, like I was saying. You come from the school side, you go up there.
Please.
Yeah, I just told you. You don't get to decide where it goes. It's ADA compliant.
As taxpayer, you should be looking into having taxpayers.
Now, I know we're switching from remote meetings to tonight and our normal process is, if you didn't sign up ahead of time, you're able to sign up to speak the night of the meeting. So, would either of you like to sign up to speak?
Yeah.
I'll allow that tonight. If you could just please state your name and your address, then you'll have three minutes to address the board.
Okay.
And if you're going to speak about personnel issues or we're not going to address that, you can speak to the situation if you'd like, but please don't speak to personnel.
That's all.
So, you can just come up, you can state your name, your address, please, for the secretary.
Adam Long, 77 Pine Leaf Drive, Erie County, PA, 16510. Of course, obviously, you guys, I'm sure you all know, my son was one of those children on that bus. I was a bus driver. I know how hot it is on those buses. I know that if the kids are in the back of the bus acting crazy or out of line or not following rules, putting the windows up on a non-rainy, 88-degree, 90% humidity day is not the way to go. I know that even with the roof vents open and all the other windows shut, you have no air circuit. The little fans that they put on the buses, the wind blows on, they blow on the driver. They don't blow to anybody behind the driver's seat. I can assure you of that. I don't know, you know, what was done with that play. Hopefully, the right thing was done. I also would like a right to know, I'd like to see, I would like to see the video. I was told that if I asked for the right to know, that that's something that is possible for me to view or to have a copy of or whatever. I'm not sure, I don't know nothing about that, so that's why I came to ask about that. And, real quick, before I forget, with the whole handicap ramp to those fields, about a month ago, my softball team, we had a practice up on the girls. My wife, who has MS, who uses a cane daily, fell down that hill. I don't know where, if you say it's handicap compliant at all, because the gate was locked going to the stadium. So, she actually fell and rolled down the hill and then laid there for a couple minutes until she was able to get herself back to her feet, because we were all the way back to the softball field. So, I don't, I don't know where, where we're saying that there's anything that's handicap compliant over there at all. I've only been there a few times, so maybe I'm not seeing it, but those few times I've been there, I don't see nothing. Also, you know, back to the whole bus thing, I don't see how there's not criminal charges. If I took my, you know, thankfully, with my kids and none of your kids, if they go to the school here, I've had multiple people reach out to me negatively. One being a bus driver that drives for the district right now, reach out to us, some very nasty comments. So, I know that if I took my kid to Walmart and left him in the car with the windows up on a 90-degree day when it was, I mean, blistering hot outside, and somebody called the police on me, the police would come see me. They would come arrest me. They would charge me with child, child abuse, whatever it may be. I don't know what the punishment was for this driver. I know from being an employee of Durham before, I know in my mind what I think their punishment was and I'm sure that come September, that driver should be back on the bus, which isn't right. And if anybody agrees with their judgment or decision on that, then we should look into you guys still, so.
Thank you, Mr. Long, for your comments. Attorney McFlor, are you able to address the right-to-know request?
I'll look into that.
Okay.
I can't answer your question right now, but I absolutely will look into that. You didn't know to do that.
Thank you.
Appreciate that. Okay, no one else has signed up to address the board this evening? I thank our speakers tonight that addressed the board. Moving our agenda to the superintendent's report, the chair recognizes superintendent Mr. Kimberlin, Mr. Berlin.
I don't have a report this evening.
Thank you, Mr. Berlin. Chair recognizes Mrs. Vicky Bending, the business administrator for the business administrator report, Mrs. Bending.
Thank you, Mr. President. For tonight, I have the general fund treasures report as of May 31st, 2021. Cash in the bank as of May 31st, 2021, $5,683,114.94. The capital projects treasures report as of May 31st, cash in that account as of May 31st, $17.93. And the cafeteria fund treasures report as of May 31st, 2021, cash in that account, I also have the bill lists, checks already written since the last board meeting totaling Cafeteria checks already written in the amount of $161.84. And the high school activity account currently has, as of May 31st, $73,898.36 in that account. That is all I have for the evening. For this evening, the rest of the reports will be available next week.
Thank you, Madam Business Administrator. Any questions or discussion for the business administrator on her report? Mr. Paris.
What happened to all the fundraising funds for the students that they raised for activities that couldn't take place over the last couple of years because of COVID?
So, each activity account has their own, there's one checking account, but within that account, each activity has their own fund. So, if the drama club had a fundraiser, it stays with the drama club for the following year, is my understanding, unless something, unless the student body votes to do something different with it, but it stays in that account for the following year's activity.
Well, so like, the eighth grade Cedar Point trip's been for two years. Was there any fundraising for that that stays with that class as they go forward or is it get?
No.
Or is that just a separate trip that parents pay?
So, it's eighth grade, so that's middle school accounts, not the high school activity account. It's a middle school account and for the eighth graders, to my knowledge, there is not any fundraising that happens for that. They figure out how many kids are going to go, what the fee is, how much the bus is going to be, and the parents pretty much pay for their child to go. So, there isn't any funds for that. And if there was, it would stay in the student body account at the middle school.
Okay.
But, to my knowledge, there isn't any account or fundraising for that purpose.
Thank you. Any other questions? I'm Mr. Blazer.
So, Vicky, the capital funds, capital projects count going down to $17. Part of that was the purchase of the timing equipment for track? Was that like one of the major things that went in?
Yes, that was the balance of the committed fund for the...
Athletic company.
Athletic contingency, yes.
Sure. So, I'm just curious, I know it took a while till we got approved on that. Did we get it in time and did they, were they able to use it before the end of the year?
No.
Okay.
It was because of the pandemic and the supply chain issues. I think it was supposed to have been shipped on May 10th, which was the last week, and then there was tablets that had to be here in order for that to be hooked up and the tablets didn't make it until the kids' home meets were already finished.
So, it's made conditioner for next year?
It is, yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions for the business administrator? I give your report, Mrs. Bending. Moving on to our agenda, there are no items under legal advisement for next week. The chair recognizes Mr. Martin Pushcheck for finance. Mr. Pushcheck.
Mr. President, a number of items, excuse me, under finance. F1, we'll be asking the board to approve monthly budgetary transfers from the budget versus actual report as outlined. F2, we'll be looking to adopt the general fund budget for the 21-22 school year. And there will be a number of resolutions, which I will read in their entirety at the full board meeting regarding real property tax, the re-upping of per capita tax, Act 511 for capita Tax, earned income tax, real key transfer tax, food and services tax. There will also be an Act 1 exclusion resolution, which takes care of re-approving the homestead, farmstead as outlined. And finally, I will approve the food service prices for the 21-22 school year and my understanding is there will be no change to the next year. That's all that's on the agenda at the moment.
Thank you, Mr. Pushcheck. Any discussion on any of the 10 items under finance that's on our agenda this evening? Hearing now, those 10 items will be on the agenda next week for your consideration. Thank you, Mr. Pushcheck.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Chair recognizes Mr. Josh Paris for buildings and grounds. Mr. Paris.
Thank you, Mr. President. There will be one item next week, a facilities use request.
Thank you. Any questions or discussion on the facilities use request? You'll see, it is for this weekend. Sometimes we do a retroactive approval when these things happen to occur.
I do have a question.
Yes, Mrs. Pound.
How do we calculate the estimated cost, like $1,536?
The facility use policy for the board has as part of it a table of charges.
It's an attachment at the bottom. I guess we'll...
Anything else under buildings and grounds? Hearing now, B1 will be on your agenda for consideration next week. Thank you, Mr. Paris.
Thank you.
Chair recognizes Mr. Jeremy Blazer for personnel. Mr. Blazer.
Thank you, Mr. President. We have twelve items for next week's meeting and personnel. I'll go over all of them and see if we have any questions. P1 will be a Kelly substitute list addition. P2 is extended school year appointments, an addition of a special education aid. P3, resignations to approve resignations as detailed. P4 is our superintendent performance evaluation to approve the superintendent's 2021 annual performance evaluation. P5 is a tuition reimbursement to approve the tuition reimbursements in the attachment. P6 is a job description to approve the revised band director job description as outlined. P7 is summer help to approve the summer help appointments detailed below. P8, appointments, we have some links in there, assuming we're going to get it filled in by next week, but basically, to approve the other appointments as detailed. P9, situational awareness and de-escalation training to approve the cost for that training at the beginning of the year. P10, a leave request to approve the FMLA leave as detailed. P11, office request to approve attendance at a conference. And P12, attendance at meetings, approve the annual travel reimbursement for Department of Ed for later meetings as indicated.
Any questions on the 12 items under personnel? Mr. Paris.
So, how many, what did we get? Four retirements, though, for the teachers?
Six.
Oh, six, okay.
There was two that had turned in.
Right.
There's prior to, so four after the incentive was announced.
Are they all eligible for the...
They were all eligible for them, yes.
Yeah, so that, it did help.
Sure.
Any other questions? Mr. Blazer, if you can go through that fast next week, it would be very appreciated.
Marty can go through this as fast.
Oh, it's a contest.
Those 12 items will be on your agenda under personnel next week for your consideration. The chair recognizes Mrs. Amanda Farrell for policy. Mrs. Farrell.
I have no items.
Thank you, Mrs. Farrell. The chair recognizes Mr. Stephen Morbe for curriculum. Mr. Morbe.
Mr. President, there will be nine items under curriculum, items C1 through C9. C1 will be a motion to approve emergency instructional time assurance. C2 will be the curriculum revision cycle. C3 will be a motion for leadership class textbooks, purchase of textbooks. C4 will be a motion to approve language instructional education program services contract with Northwest Tri-Countering IU unit. C5 will be the Erie County Special Education Transition Program as outlined. C6 will be the Penn State College Education Curriculum and Field Instruction affiliation with Penn State Baron. C7 will be the approval of academic services of LearnWell for hospitalized middle school student. C8 will be the updated health and safety plan as outlined going forward. And C9 will be the Wattsburg School District Summer COVID-19 Guidelines as outlined as well.
Thank you, Mr. Morbe. Any question or discussion on any of the nine items that are listed under curriculum?
Can I just comment on that?
Attorney McFlor, yes, please.
Yeah, just so everyone is aware, of course, the legislature undid the governor's emergency order, y'all know that, last Friday, which is why we're sitting here person today, because our Zoom meetings were being held pursuant to that order. However, they, they did not undo, so to speak, the masking guidelines by the Department of Health. And so, that order is still in effect through June 30th. So, that's why the Summer COVID-19 Guidelines are written the way they are. They track the Department of Health orders as updated June 9th.
Any questions for Attorney McFlor regarding the Summer COVID-19 Guidelines?
Just one final question, as a complement to that question. So, then therefore, the C8 document, the ESSER Health and Safety Plan, obviously, that will continue to mirror whatever new COVID guidelines and whatnot are issued as well.
Correct.
A lot of these were based upon the previous, more stringent items, it seems like, and now they're flexible enough that they'll be adjustable as the summer goes on.
Yeah, so, when I revised item C8, I tried to do it in a way that it just tracks the latest rather than lying specific things out.
Fair enough, right, yeah. I see, right, there's some of the updates that you had put in here.
Yeah, so, it'll refer to the Department of Health webpage for masking guidelines.
Fair enough, yeah. That's, yeah, it's an easy way to tie those together. Yeah, fair enough. Thank you, Mr. McFlor.
Thank you, Mr. Morbe. Any other questions regarding the nine curriculum items? Thank you, Attorney McFlor, for your comments. Hearing now, the nine items under curriculum will be on the agenda next week for your consideration. Thank you, Mr. Morbe. The chair recognizes Mrs. Tara Pound for technology. Mrs. Pound.
I have nothing for next week.
Thank you, Mrs. Pound. Chair recognizes Mrs. Nicole Lee for transportation. Mrs. Lee.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'll have two items for consideration next week. First one is T1, a student transportation agreement, and T2, a student field trip.
Thank you. Any questions on the two transportation items? Hearing now, those items will be on your agenda next week for your consideration. Thank you, Mrs. Lee. In Mr. Mattson's place tonight, the chair recognizes Vice President Amanda Farrell for athletic and extracurricular. Mrs. Farrell.
Thank you, Mr. President. There are seven items that we're looking to add under athletic and extracurricular. AE1, the 2020-2021 extracurricular appointments and looking at the appointment of a stage director, step two. AE2, extracurricular appointments and to approve the extracurricular appointments as outlined for the 2021-2022 school year. AE3, an open position for a girl soccer coach. AE4, athletic, athletic qualifications and to accept the following athletic qualifications as outlined. AE5, fall athletic appointments and to approve those appointments for the upcoming school year. AE6, activity accounts for organizations and looking to approve the activity accounts for the 2021-2022 school year. And AE7, the volunteer list and adding an additional volunteer.
Thank you very much, Mrs. Farrell. I did have one question on AE2. I couldn't pull that link up this afternoon, three-thirds. Are we able to pull that link up here? Is AE2 extracurricular appointments?
I was not able to either. I attempted just a minute ago.
Okay. Earlier.
Extracurricular appointments?
I haven't.
I get a server.
No, no, I was just checking to see. Mr. Morbe, Mr. Blazer apparently did have time and it was available. Good work.
Good to the internet.
Yeah. Any, any, no, I just wanted to make sure that was available for the public as well as other board members. Any questions on the seven items under athletic and extracurricular for next week?
I did have one.
Yes, Mrs. Pound.
Did Jay, did we appoint him for the soccer coach recently?
He was appointed to the varsity and then we appointed Julie to, just a month or two ago.
So, this would have been his position from last year, when he was seventh and eighth grade coach of last year.
Gotcha.
So, unless he would have resigned, his name would have appeared again for this year, so I'm guessing that he'll be stepping away from the seventh and eighth. So I'm guessing that he'll be stepping away from the seventh and eighth grade position, however, continuing with the varsity, if that makes sense.
Yeah, yeah, okay.
I think.
Yep.
I have questions, your
Mr. Blazer, yes?
So first one's probably simple, the extracurricular, uh, retroactive appointment for Mr. O'Donnell. So is this just that we didn't approve him when we had this list a year ago, and now we're saying he was the stage director?
That is correct.
Okay. But we didn't have a play, but he still had a stage director, is that?
He is, he has helped with a lot of things that they've done on stage.
In service.
Like not, not the play that I think of, traditional.
There's a lot, there's a lot more activities than they do.
Graduation.
Sure, sure.
So they, they'll get prorated if it opens us. You're not, not the full.
Right.
Yes. Okay. Uh, my second question is about our, um, approving of our appointments, uh, for the fall athletics, let's just say A E five. So when I was looking at, uh, our positions and reminding myself, I went back to the union contract to look at, um, all the positions that are open and available. I guess, um, what I was curious about is, I know this obviously happened when we last negotiated the union contract. And we talk about, you know, don't really have a real opportunity to revisit this, if the next time we do that. But I, I guess I didn't understand what the logic was behind how many coaches certain sports have, um, and then the pay. So just as one example, the head football coach makes a different rate than the head wrestling, than head basketball. A head track and field, uh, makes the same as head football. So I guess I was curious of how our rates, um, negotiated, is that what happens or negotiated with the student, uh, the teachers' union? And then also the number of positions, some of which people have multiple positions on the same team.
So it's, it's related, and I don't know the history of this pay scale. Um, the structure and the distance between all of those steps was kept the way it's been for, you know, probably thirty-five years. But we, we did consolidate it to just two steps rather than five. And, and
At the last contract, it's edited.
Right. And then, and then the whole, the whole salary nature was enhanced by, I think, two point four percent. Don't quote me on that.
Sure, sure.
It was somewhere in that neighborhood. So the rationale, if you look at, um, these coaching stipend, um, documents and teacher contracts, they all look similar to that. And the rationale is the sport, the size of it, um, the number of special teams that might be contained on that sport. So like football's big, because you have, you know, you have a defense coach and offense coach. Sometimes there's like, um, a quarterback and a kicking, you know, they, they divide it up. There's, there's more granularity in how that sport is organized than coached.
Similar to track and field versus like just passing.
Correct, yeah. So that's the rationale behind it. I don't know how scientific those numbers were when we ever had to know how they first got created.
And I know a lot of times we, uh, benchmark ourselves against other districts around here for how they're handling, you know, speakers at a public meeting and things of that nature. So, uh, do we know, are we pretty much the same way every other district around here handles sports as far as number of coaches and pay rates and?
Yeah, so I, I, I mean, I worked in the Armory Creek School District and the Hurcoy School District, and I could tell you that the stipend lists are very similar to that. Football's usually a pretty large staff. Soccer is usually on the smaller side. Some of the running sports, the cross-country things are usually on the smaller side.
At the time of negotiations, we did survey the other school districts in the county to find out how many coaches they had and what they were being paid and um, that kind of thing. So we do have that data as well.
Sure. And, and when I hear like, you know, the history, and, and so that's why I guess I just want to question whether we're repeating things. And football was huge in the past, and now I know, you know, often we have teams that they get a couple injuries and they can't even have the game that weekend because, you know, it's standards for the other, uh, whereas other sports like, for example, have a lot of athletes versus maybe in the past they had much less. So, um, I guess at the union, um, if the negotiation of this contract is the best way to sort of look at that and see if we're still, you know, following what makes most sense for the district, um, I guess I bring that up. It reminded me of when we had the State of Athletics presentation, gosh, I don't know, was it two years or so ago? Um, and I guess I was just curious, we now have our brand new athletic facility, and I wondered if that was something we could look at again, as what this participation looked like. When we added the ball and ball coach, you know, a month or so ago, um, it was in relation to more athletes in a particular sport and needing another, uh, coach. So I guess I was just curious if we couldn't, you know, look at that and see if we're, you know, doing it the best we can.
And sure, and, and, and we have added sports, we're, we're the, um, or coaches to sports where the numbers are growing like track and field. We've added cross-country, we've added, um, football, you know, that, that program is really in a rebuilding phase right now. I mean, we kind of know what happened, the other coach resigned, and then a lot of the kids were, you know, they didn't want to coach for, or play for a new coach. So that was, that was a really lean year, but we, we've been trying to look for teachers, when we hire teachers, that are also willing to coach. Like, and Dawn Einhaus is a perfect example. He just happens to have college coaching experience. And so I think you'll see the numbers in the football program really grow. I hear really good things about him, and, uh, you know, he, and he's doing the right things, like he's involved with the, the Little Ritter football team. You know, that's, that's really where it kind of starts, um, getting kids interested, so.
And, and I wasn't gonna speak about any specific coaches, but I hear the same thing, that, uh, Mr. Einhaus is doing exactly what Mr. Carter told us. He wanted all the head coaches to be, which is build their program. So I think he's doing a great job.
Yeah. And the, I, the numbers are coming up. I mean, the, the softball team did wonderful this year. That was the best they've done. What did they say, graduation or something, forty-five years?
Forty-five years.
Yeah. Uh, the most wins in twenty-five, it was just really, really great. The baseball team, they feel to the solid team, we've had trouble filling full teams there. So that was nice. The track team, once again, excelled. But we've put, we've put time and effort into the running program. And that, and then that's starting to translate to the track and field program.
So it really comes down to complexity of the sport, span of control that the, the head coach has.
Right.
Plus the amount of kids, too. You can't just hang your hat on the amount of kids we have playing.
Right, correct.
That's all the questions.
Thank you, Mr. Blazer, for the answer to your satisfaction.
Sure.
Today.
Any other questions regarding the seven items under athletic and extracurricular? Hearing none of those seven items will be on your agenda for next week, and I thank Mrs. Farrell for presenting. You'll see two items, uh, under miscellaneous, the pyramid health agreement, and to declare the list of books as surplus. Any discussion on the two items under miscellaneous? Hearing none, those two items will be on your agenda for your consideration next week. Bring us to Erie County Technical School Report, the chair recognizes Mrs. Nicole Lee, Mrs. Lee.
Thank you, Dr. Pushcheck. Um, I will not have an update next week if I was not able to.
Thank you. Uh, regarding the Northwest Tri County Intermediate Unit, um, our next meeting is the Wednesday after our board meeting next Monday. So I'll have no report this month. I'll catch you up as well. Bring us to board correspondence and dialogue. Um, I just want to publicly state how wonderful graduation was for Seneca High School. I was able to attend along with Mr. Morbe, Mr. Blazer, Mr. Paris. Mr. Paris assisted with the distribution of diplomas on a beautiful outdoor Wattsburg area evening. It was amazing. The parents were happy, the kids were smiling, the speeches were amazing. The weather cooperated. Uh, it was, it was a very nice event. And I just wanted to congratulate Mr. Miller, Mr. Angler, and everyone else who was involved with that, um, planning and execution. And I went to the one practice and just, we had to practice inside and outside just in case, but the students did a great job, and, and I commend them. A class of twenty twenty-one, and we all wore matching masks, so. Any other board correspondence and dialogue?
Will that become a, an annual thing now, or is that class discretion? Who chooses that? I mean, I know, I think this year was class discretion. The kid, yeah, the kids, because the, the kids really wanted it outside. Yeah. And, and at first, we were planning it outside just because that was the only way we could accommodate everybody. And then the option to go inside came up, and Mr. Miller ran it by the kids, and they weren't gonna have any part of it, so.
Okay.
I think as long as they want to do it, we'll do, do the thing.
Sure. Any other board correspondence and dialogue?
I have one thing. In your folders is the, a copy of the ink, which is from the Nutrition Group. That is their, um, their company publication magazine. There is a picture of our employee, Carrie Burton, hand is in there. They had selected the picture from things that were posted online. It's in their company magazine. So I thought that was, um, fun to note, and just things that they're doing, um, nationally, um, with their company, too. So they had asked if I would share that with the board, so there you have it.
We'll tell them you did, and we're very proud of our employees that, uh, work in our food service program. Any other board correspondence and dialogue? Just wanted to welcome everybody back. Been together for a while. It's nice to see everybody continue the good work that we do for our students and community of the district. With that, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
No move.
All in favor, say aye. And opposed, nay. We are adjourned. Thank you, everyone. Have a safe trip home.